All right, thank you. I think next we have a report from David Hicks on alternatives to incarceration.
So I shouldn't do a lot of stretching.
Feel free, be yourself.
We used to have one of them bike car co-ops in Jersey. We would just borrow one and drop it off someplace later when we'd leave it. That's what you're talking about here.
That was not a government approved program.
That's a good defense for my next client.
That's already.
I thought it was a cop. He's gonna sleep if it's somebody else. It could work.
You'll take the whole lot of reporting.
It's a zero funding solution. Get this started soon. I've hit something I'm not supposed to hit.
Go up to slide show later.
What did?
Go up to slide show.
Slide show. Oh, I got it. Thank you. You sure. Okay. And then every time I kick ass and do something, it's right there in Marty's. I'm computing channel. All right, manager, thank you all. I'm trying not to take up too much of your time. My name is David Hicks. A hat I'm wearing for these purposes is I'm interim director for Department of Justice Services. The presentation today was significantly contributed to by Rhonda Gilmore, Dr. Gilmore. She's here today. She's the head of our Adult Service Program Manager. She's the program manager for head of our Adult Services. Tom Fitzpatrick, Tom is here also. He's recently on board, Criminal Justice Planner. Teresa Searls, she's our evaluation specialist. She's not here today. In addition, with us here today is Rufus Fleming. Rufus is a deputy director over at the department. He's been on board since I met. Background, I think I handed out everybody the topic briefly. 2009, community criminal justice board charged by the mayor with the issue of jail overcrowding. Obviously, that was made in conjunction with the decision to go forward with the construction of the new jail or justice center, as we like to call it. And clearly, as you all know, the decision was made by the mayor back in '09 not to build a jail the size of which a recommendation at that time suggested, which I believe was about 2,000 person facility. Basically, also, we were saying with recommendations to create for the Criminal Justice Board alternatives to incarceration that are cost effective, community based, enable to deliver quality programs for individuals who receive services through alternatives. Kind of, I want to jump ahead a little bit and come back on what we're trying to achieve. And I guess also for historical purposes, that was '09. We went forward candidly because again, especially for Ms. Trammell, and because I've been in front of her committee a lot for the detention center. I'm not really big on trying to not show the good, the bad, and the other. So I'll leave him saying what it is and now to remember I said. There, when I took over the department after closure of the detention center in April, soon thereafter, the mayor also charged me with this task, or the alternative. Prior to that, the task had been housed with Dr. Graham and then Director Kita. Now, as far as the criminal, the provision of justice services. Right now, as we are here today, Dr. Gilmore is the only management level person that's now at that agency that was there when I got there. So we've had a complete reworking of the agency. So we can jump to the end and I can tell you, right now, we are on this particular issue. We are probably about a year behind where we should be. And, you know, so I can jump to the end and tell you, you know, we should have been where we are now. If we were here this time last year, it would have been cause for concern. The fact that we're here now with the jail opening in January '14 is bright in the windshield because there is a lot to do and there are some things that should have been done, one would have thought would have been done, that haven't been done. So I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus, but I'm also here to tell you that if you have all the why hasn't it been done questions, I don't have the answer. In the last couple of months, I could either spend it trying to figure out what had happened and didn't happen, or I could try to make the goal of being ready when we open up, and that's where I decided to put my energies. So I'll say that in advance. We're behind, I'm the first one to tell you, we're behind. And we've got a steep road to climb. I do believe we'll be able to get there. I think we've got great people on board, but it's going to be, it's going to be tight. Anyway, jumping ahead, the Biennial Plan came out, Criminal Justice Biennial Plan, that outlined strategies, et cetera. At the end of the day, the plan indicated that careful attention must be given to identifying the jail detainees safely and effectively supervised in the community or non-jail setting. Bottom five categories, represent populations targeted, low risk offenders, substance abusers, traffic offenders, technical violations, probation offenders with underlying mental issues. None of that's anything new. All of that is states that everybody in the criminal justice system has been saying for the last 20 years. So nobody's identified a thing yet, knew. The difference is, what's the "how"? How we're going to get there is a question we don't have answered yet, and we're desperately trying to figure out. It's not just the "how", but it's the where the money's going to come and pay for it. Because that's one of the reasons why the current system, in my opinion, is in place. Because unfortunately, too often, the cheapest thing to do was to continue just to put them in warehouses and jails as opposed to find something that's long-term beneficial for the community. So part of what we are attempting to do is do a paradigm shift. And by that, I brought this, to show you how deep it is. This Sunday, just found this yesterday. All right, this Sunday, front page article in the newspaper, talking about the issue, fairly the safety issue of texting and driving, and it's going to be gone to the General Assembly. It's an important issue. The headline, however, is illustrated. Text and drive, go to jail. So it's not be punished, it's not be held accountable, it's go to jail. One of the things that we have gotten caught up in throughout the system is a jail is the default position that we assume should be the first step, and it shouldn't. That paradigm shift is going to have to occur if we are going to do this properly. One thing I would say, and one thing I think I found, on how we got here and got so late, I really do believe that there are individuals who thought that we were looking for a tweak solution. We are not. Let me be very clear. One of the things that you all dealt with last year, you know, no hiding the ball. When all of the issues came up about what the, I think Mr. Joel particularly remembers this, what the rated capacity, et cetera, and all those questions, and it became very clear that titles meant something special. Sometimes they did not necessarily mean what would have thought was commonly thought. For example, a 1032 rated capacity, we learned in counseling, sometimes even in administration, did not mean that there were 1,032 beds. That meant the rating capacity, and that had to do with formulas came from state, specifically for 1,000 rated two beds, it meant that you had 10% more special use beds than that. So by definition, a rated capacity of 1032 makes you actually have 1,100 or so beds. Saying all that to say, I want to make sure when we're having these conversations, our objective is clear. It's not to play with the numbers. It is to take a system that for the last 20-plus years has had an excess on average of 1,300 to 1,400 individuals on a given day behind those bars, and get that number down to something around the 1,200, 1,100 minimum. It's not something that's being done to play with numbers. And I say that upfront because for me, there are a lot of ways to play with the numbers, even as far as we could put extra bunks in every cell and have 1,400 bunks in the cell and still have a rate capacity of 1032 and still have that number of people in there and be able to say the jail's not overcrowding because everyone has a bunk. That is not what we're trying to do. Since that's not what we're trying to do, there are no easy answers. Or actually, as I said before, something, if there are no easy answers, we should be further down the road than we are. All right. Estimative population reductions from the CCJB report indicated this, 50 to 100 offenders with mental illness. One of the things we have done with the help of Mr. Herron is instituted the mental health docket. Not getting too deep into the weeds, we ran into some concerns when it comes from the General Assembly on whether or not they want you to actually be called things courts or dockets and pushback from that that might be a battle we have to fight over with the General Assembly. It's one of the challenges in trying to change the system. This stuff is very involved. 150 offenders with substance abuse. In my opinion, I think that's going to be our greatest challenge with the potential greatest rewards. If we finally start addressing where these individuals with substance abuse need to be, do they actually, for the purposes of public safety, for the purposes of the operation of criminal justice system, do they actually need to be in a full security jail, or is there something else to accommodate that? That is where the hard question's going to be, and that's where the hard answer's going to be. Some of them we can get from other places, some of them we might have to actually figure out and just make sure we make them work here. 100 to 150 low-risk offenders, 50 traffic offenders, 50 technical violators, that's what was identified as the potential places where we're going to do population reduction. Again, this is the paradigm shift. And in the end of the road, if we do not change how we think and how we operate, we're just buying time to end up here again, in my own opinion. The use of the jail should be the last option, not the default option. We have been operating for the last 30 years with the use of the jail as the default option. Don't know where to put somebody, if you're homeless, if they've got mental health issues, if they can't make bond, put them in a jail. That's got to change. And it's not going to happen easily, and it's going to take a bold move to make it happen. We cannot say it over again because there's a lot of ways to sugarcoat it, because there's only about 30 ways to do it right. Our mission has to be to create a system that promotes public safety and the effective operation of criminal justice system by providing the appropriate level of intervention and response to the assessed risks. We got to do this smart. And if we don't do it smart, we're going to do it another way. Do we have all the answers? No. But do we think we can get there? Yeah, we do. Jumping ahead, evidence-based correction protocol, determines for managing jail population, admission, slant of stage, risk assessment, classifications, transitions. One of the things I found out, and I'm glad I had the background, it wasn't totally new, is when you get to definitions and some of the protocols that people have there for a reason, that's where the hard work begins. You know, one of the things, you know, we've been really good with the sheriff being willing to work with us, but at the same time having to understand, you know, we're asking a lot of him when you talk about changing classification. Sometimes you can have a classification system that literally determines how you get classified, risk assessment, one being, I think, the most dangerous, eight being the least, that if you had an offense 10 years ago, that still factors into your risk assessment. So asking him to reevaluate his classification system for the default position not to be, I lock them up, I'm covered, it's not my fault. But that's a big ask. To ask the Commonwealth Attorney to have something that he can believe in so the default position for his prosecutors is not no bond in charge. All of those things have to buy in. It's not just Criminal Justice Services, Commonwealth Attorneys, the magistrates, the police department, the sheriff, it's a system-wide reevaluation. And luckily, we've got good partners. I mean, I cannot say enough about Mike Herron's willingness to work with us on this because candidly, without his and Woody's willingness to work with us on this, this thing would be deadwood. Evidence-based decision making. I'll be the first to tell you, I've resisted sometimes with the evidence-based term. That seems like the newest thing that's going on nowadays, everything criminal justice is evidence-based, you know, as if it would be anything else. Best result to achieve when the criminal genic, Dr. Gilmore teased me about that word same as I mentioned before, so, needs a targeted intervention and treatment. You know, misconduct has to be diminished with swift and certain proportionate response, incentives, positive reinforcement. All that comes with a piece on all these slides. Notice the source line. That's the National Association of.
Pre-trial services agencies.
Pre-trial services agencies, where that came from. Programming provided in community setting is designed to produce certain results. Sanctions alone, that program is not considered as a revision reduction. One of the things you'll see as we go through here, one of the numbers, some of the numbers are skewed. We do have frequent flyers in the criminal justice system that tend to run the numbers up, you know, and probably addressing those are probably long-term our best place to really get systematic change. Some of it is real, some of it is just counted. One of the things we found out, anecdotal things we get down to think, an admission, for example, can happen every time a person comes in to the facility. It also can happen if the person is temporarily transferred to another jurisdiction because of charges they have there. We can have somebody in Richmond gets transferred down to Newport or Nudes, the deal when his charge is there, when he comes back, we count him again. You know, the person has never gotten a handcuff, but we count him twice. You know, so some of the numbers are real, but some of the numbers are also, don't have an initial reaction to the numbers until you know what goes behind them. So just a caution. Yes, sir.
I've been asked that question too. How come they can't finish their term right here instead of getting the transfer? Because I have a friend right now, this has happened to her daughter.
I don't have an easy answer. Sometimes, you know, people got to settle their accounts to other places. Sometimes judges can give you credit for things served, sometimes they choose not to. It's involved, and I don't have all the ins and outs.
Because now, perhaps she finishes her term there, or one time, she's got to come back here and finish it.
Right.
And she didn't understand how, she just couldn't do it all one time right here, then go there and do it.
Rivas, sometimes. Sometimes judges in different jurisdictions feel like because we're two different events that happen at different times, the person shouldn't have to only serve one time for both crimes. They feel like they ought to serve the crime, the time for the crime committed there. So you get five days here and you get five days there, instead of serving one five-day period, the judges feel like you ought to serve five days and you can go deal with that judge and his five days.
Yeah, there's no, and no two cases are usually like you. Sometimes, and there are sometimes a judge will say, okay, you're already in jail here, I'll give you time, credit for that time served, but it's the judge's decision after the bite you make.
More, you have something?
Yes, which has been my manager from day one. He mentioned every category up and down the food chain except the judges. And to this moment, I don't know where we are with how acquiescent the judges are. Heard about the Commonwealth Attorney and Sheriff, the magistrate and all the rest, but the judge is a whole different ballgame. And until we get acquiescence from them, I don't see how any of this is going to work.
And I would, what I think the process on how it's going to have to work is, I don't think we should or could expect the judges to buy in unless until we're convinced what it is that we've built will work. I mean, they're not going to buy into just the concept, but I do believe if you design and build something, that the Commonwealth Attorney, the sheriff, and all the stakeholders up and down the line say, we like this, and we trust and believe in it, I think the likelihood that the judges will give it a try is about as high as you can possibly make.
And CCJB, I think more.
Let me just say that, I'm just convinced that this is revolutionary, what we're exploring here, and they might have to opt to the effort, and to you to believe this. So I'm 100% with you. I just don't know whether this thing is going to work until we get buy-ins from these judges. And you've got hanging judges out here. They hate it, they're sick of it. And any kind of mediation and mitigation, go to jail! And, and so, that's a tough one, but I hear you. You got to build it first and then present it and sell it. And that's probably how it's going to have to go.
Don't forget, CCJB has a general district, a juvenile district, a juvenile domestic relations district court, and a circuit court judge on CCJB along with Dr. Newville and some other folks. So they are part of the process.
And so every one of them may buy in completely. That doesn't mean rats patouille when it comes to the others. I mean, you down there, you know how independent those guys are. How they lord over their turf.
Some of this is.
I think Chris had a comment.
I apologize here. I heard earlier, I think page two or so, how we're going to have to get some buy-in from the General Assembly.
Might.
Might.
Depends on some.
So that will not be a, that's not something that should be our legislative package this year?
No, sir, I wouldn't. I think in a perfect world, it would be nice to know by now, but at this stage, I don't think we could be in a place where we can recommend something to the court for national impact.
And this is just, when you say help from the General Assembly, you're not just speaking of dollars, you're speaking of state code and so forth, where we can actually do what we're planning to do?
I don't think.
Do we have the authority to do everything we want to do right then?
I don't know. And I would say, and that's why too, there is an anecdote, one of the things going on with the General Assembly, interestingly enough, Mr. Joel, for the judge's point of view, it's being viewed as the General Assembly trying to restrict their discretion when there's discussions over the ability to have some of the, I just messed up. The ability to have some of the special court dockets, et cetera, you know, sort of mental health docket. You know, there's a tension there. I don't know where it's going to end up, but it is something, I brought it up because I wanted to be, us to be aware of it. It's one of those, those factors out there that I would rather us not be aware that it exists. Right now, I view this imminent problem, I do not. But, you know, it's on the horizon, and we're going to have to be aware of it as we move forward.
Okay. Just if we could have a breakdown of what we definitely have the authority to do now, I think that would be helpful so that we can get a better estimation of what we're definitely going to be able to do on the front end, and then what we're going to have to work on for the 2014 General Assembly.
No problem. These are sort of the processes to go through incarceration, or these are sort of some of the key decision point places. You know, arrest, interestingly enough, you have to include, and one of the successful places for that has been with the mental health and the intervention. You know, to make sure that the police officers have the proper training and they know who they're supposed to call when they encounter an individual that has some mental health challenges as opposed to the regular paradigm of, let me take them down to the jail and let's figure out. That has been very, very fruitful so far, that's very promising. So that's also very promising when we talk about, can we do a general paradigm shift? I think that's probably the best example, yes, we can. You know, because officers are extremely amenable to having more tools to work with candidly, to having people involved if they have the trust of them, you know, with the appropriate tools for the job. Pre-trial status, charging, decision, pre-determination, sentencing, community intervention, violation response. Violation response, for example, what's that? If a person has probation, or if they've been released and they have the conditions of their release, and they buy it as well, what happens? You know, some of that, in the end of the day, if I go down all these things, arrests, that's mostly going to be police law enforcement. Pre-trial status, charging, pre-determination, sentencing, combination with the Commonwealth Attorney and the judges. Community intervention, that's problematic. Violation response, that's the judge's Commonwealth Attorney. Discharge from district system, local institution, institutional, these different stakeholders. Now I want to get down to this, I said, get real free here. Richmond City Jail's admission through fiscal years of '08 through '11. And I want to start with the definition. A jail mission is defined by Criminal Justice Bureau report, individuals committed to the city jail by a judge or magistrate. These numbers, total numbers, may include multiple admissions of an individual. So look at the numbers with please, 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 I've been doing it for 26 years. Now look at those numbers and run with them, and they tell you the whole story, they do not. Because technically, under that, I could have a misdemeanor charge that I got arrested and locked up for, and it's going to count. I could have a felony charge and I got released by the magistrate on bond and not put in jail, and it won't count. Please do not take this as an indication of, ooh, this is the, how many people arrested, or what's the state of crime? It's not. You know, so.
But it is the number of people that have actually entered into the jail.
No. It's a factor of the number of people who actually enter into jail. You could have the same person that gets counted multiple times. So that's why I'm saying, don't take the numbers and run with them, just look at them for assuming that I'm counting the same thing, whatever thing is, over a course of time. But it's just a step one, it does not give you enough information to make any policy determination on. For example, this will tell you that in the course of five years, we have gone from 26,000 admissions to 18. Is that a reflection of just crime dropping? Don't take it to mean anything other than jail dish. I mean, and obviously, like, it's what numbers capture, please don't take it and say, oh, but it must mean something else.
So would that mean that that feels good trend?
It's a trend, and it's better than going the other way. So if you're saying, what's the most likely? It's better than going the other way. You know, it's like, okay, it looks like we're heading in the right direction, okay. It looks as though, overall speaking, we have less of a use of the jail than we had before. And once you get beyond that general, it looks, the severity of the people in there, no, I don't know any of that from these numbers. So don't make it anything more than this.
Senator, is it possible to break out what you referred to as frequent flyers? And to profile them in terms of the particular, whether it's substance abuse or something like that, so we can get a better handle in terms of what the problematic needs to be and how we, you know, what we need to ramp up in terms of servicing population?
When I talk about what should have been done by now, that's over one of the next. The data mining, so we can actually know what this means. We're in the process of doing that now. It would have been nice if this had been done already, because as we're designing the programs, that's what you need to know. If these are, if these are child support non-payers, if these are drug offenders, or what they are, you know, if I've got 26,000 drive-by shooters, there's not a whole bunch I'm going to be able to do. If I got 26,000 back child support payments, I probably got a bunch of room to get the place, you know, population down. We're going on anecdote. The good news is it's decently well-informed anecdote. The people that we have involved, Woody, other people involved in the system, they've got a good sense, but you kind of need a little bit better data to do program. Yeah, that's in progress now. We've been on that pretty hard for about six weeks, eight weeks? So six, eight weeks into the process. That's the data.
And a follow-up, and a question now. Based on the data that we do have, it is in a format or program way that we can. Based on the data that we do have, it is in a format or program way that we can better define. I mean, we need new programs so frequently when we do this. We'll say the data that we have, even though it's good data, it's not data that we can sort or analyze in a way that gives us the kind of information that we need. And I guess that's the question I'm asking. Are we able to get the kind of information that we're looking for from the current data?
We are, there's going to have to be, it's not as, one of our challenges, and you're not getting too deep into the weed, one of our challenges in mining the data has been some of how it's been recorded. I mean, it's not been recorded for the purposes of some of the information we're trying to get out of it. It's been for something else. So it can be found, but a lot of times you literally have to go in there and manually go back through. You have to necessarily, a person, Mike Thomas used an example earlier. They maintain which numbers, Thomas, from the last mission?
I mean, to answer the question, the way the database is done is used to manage their population. It's not used to do analysis after the fact. So I analogize this to going to King's Dominion. And I can tell you what time the person came to King's Dominion and what line they're waiting in currently, for what rights. I can't tell you how long they wrote in the rights earlier. So I can't tell you how long an individual who's currently in jail was pre-trial, how long he was in post-trial, I mean, after his conviction but before sentencing, or after his sentencing to a different status. Because every time his status changes or her status changes, it's rewritten into that code. So we are now working on going backwards and trying to figure out how we can do that analysis so we can break it down and provide that to you. But that is the challenge, is that it's a population management system. It's not a system that was designed to do analytical work.
And part of that candidate is it's doing what it was designed to do. It has never been a mission of, okay, as we go along, one of these days we're going to try to figure out whether everybody who's here needs to be here or they could be somewhere else. It wasn't a mission statement, you know? So you gather the data for your mission. Your mission is to keep the people here, there, and not be harming the public and hopefully not each other. That was the mission of the jail. That's the data they kept. Nobody's job was, let's figure out how we can have fewer people up in here. They didn't keep that data. Now, we think it can be derived, you know, because it needs to be. Probably should have been ten, ten years ago. But, you know, that's where we are here now. The good news is we've got a urgency of a new facility coming online in thirteen months. So we've got to figure it out.
Yeah, for city convenience, could much of what we're talking about, not all, but much of what we're talking about, be encapsulated under pre-trial services?
Not all.
Court services? What are we talking about here?
That's.
Can we put a name or what would be the umbrella for all of this activity?
I think the umbrella for all this activity is, and I'm hesitant to say, you know, really almost goes back to our, the paradox. The umbrella of the activity is for us to figure out, you know, what's the number of individuals that can be maintained in the criminal justice system outside of a jail facility without compromising public safety or the operation of courses? I think if we define it like that, we'll get to the answer that's best for you. If we define it some other way, we can get to an answer short of. I think that we should be.
So I'm ahead of myself and finding my neat and clean.
Well, and that's one of the things, because, and this is, I will challenge everyone for, this is pushing a little bit. The objective isn't neat and clean, because the reality is, someone could argue, the neat and clean is what we have already. If, you know, if you want to make sure that the person is going to show up for court, I can tell you what, you give them to the jail, they're going to show up in court. Now, what are the other costs associated with whether they need it to be there? That's somebody else's problem. And since we don't count, since we don't count that, I don't know how much that costs. But I can tell you, on court day at nine o'clock, the judge doesn't have to worry about whether he'd be there or not if he gave you to what. That's how we got the problem. One of the things I say now, I'll say it again, I'll say it again, especially for the short term. For the short term, the pure dollars and cents of someone being someplace other than the city of jail may not be immediately less. Because the reality of the situation is the marginal cost of adding another person to the jail, even a whole bunch. Okay, it's not a whole bunch more food, it's no more money for deputies. Once you've got that fixed cost of the facility, that's one of the other slippery slopes that gets you to a facility where the default position is put them in jail. The other reality, which we have to hold, is who our population is, especially in a poor city like Richmond. These are disproportionately poor people, which means disproportionately advocacy for why are we doing it this way doesn't normally naturally exist. Really easy to get how we got here. There is no bad guy. This is the way the slope of the road is and the ball is going to roll that way all by itself. So one of the things is stop looking for bad guy, because he or she doesn't exist. It just ends up people doing their job the way they learned it, and you look up and you've got what you got.
Uh, we could argue that.
Oh, I mean, there's instances. I mean, I'm not being last considered our instance, but for the most part, it is what it is. Now, I'm sorry, jump in. Releases, okay, this sort of corresponds to admissions. Releases defines individuals who have been committed to a sentence, served, transferred to another city, jurisdiction, and also posted by. Average daily population, and that was kind of getting me to it. Again, I hate to be, please don't just think this is what it is. Averages can be many things. It looks as though the jail takes their count at the end of every month and then uses that to calculate the average. It's close enough. Somebody might say, what you really should do is take the count every day. And then, you know, but in the end of the day, for program purposes, if you're off by 10 or 20 people and you've got a facility that you're trying to reduce the population of a couple hundred, you know, it's within the margins. But don't take this as gospel, that's kind of what I'm there. All right, then this is a different way in this chart. I'm sorry.
So the average is the beginning of the month and the end of the month?
No, the average is, right now, my understanding is the end of each month, last day of each month, right, take a count. And then.
Must have a count every day.
That's accurate, sorry.
I'm sorry.
The chart.
I just wanted to know how you compute the average.
Yeah, the chart is actually, is the average, it's the average of the month, but it's not computed, it's just, it is an average of each day.
Okay.
Sorry, so the other statistics later on, how we divided up the general population, was taking snapshots of who's there on that day, and that was the question.
So average, don't get this wrong, I'm sorry, that's mine, I explained it wrong. Again, average population, the good news is trending purpose, for just purposes of trending. Over the past five years, the trend is going that, it seems to be going in the right direction. Obviously, we've had a pretty leveling off for the past three years. You had a significant drop, you know, from '08 to '09, and it seems like we leveled off. Good rule of thumb for purposes of what are our goals? We are running an average population in excess of 1,300, and our goal is to get it below that. So for purposes of programming, the difference in 10 and 20 is not going to make all that much of a difference. You know, that's, we've got to wait to get there, and it has to be sustainable. And again, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you again, there's a whole bunch of tricks on any given day. You can move that number. The question is whether or not you're going to be different this time.
David, we're not considering a message that we're getting too soft on crime.
Absolutely not.
Because that's what a lot of people ask, and I told them, no, that you have mentioned that before, that it's not going to be that. It's just going to be moving different people. We're not letting just some people that have mental issues or whatever, or drug offenses or DUIs, or not paying child support, be the ones that will be put somewhere else. But as far as you, we're not, we're considering a message saying that, no, if you do this, you're not going to be arrested. Yeah, you are.
This is not about a lack of accountability. This is not about sacrificing public safety. What this is, is about, let's find the most appropriate placement for the individuals in order to achieve the goal of public safety and accountability. So that's what we're trying to do. And that's kind of what makes it hard, because there's no blanket solution. You know, it's, it's going to be challenged, but yes.
The question I have, how much do, how much does the data help us in being able to identify persons that repeat offenders? These numbers, are we?
The data's a starting point. And what this data does is this data gives us sort of the thresholds as to where we need to have more information in order to really develop policy.
But I mean, if we have 18 admissions, 18,000, can we say what percentage of those have, you know, were incarcerated repeatedly?
Will we be able to? Yes, we will. Can we right now? No, we cannot. Do we need to in order to formulate policy effectively? Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, so yeah, we need to have that, what the numbers really mean. And in the end of the day, again, we've got to know what the numbers really mean in order to design effective policy. Average daily population, again, okay, this is by jail. All right, this is probably one of the better slides, this particular one. All right, we go from fiscal year '08 to fiscal year '12. And these numbers indicate what the categories of individuals are. And as you can see, we've got four different kinds of lines. You've got the blue line, the red line, the sort of greenish gold line, and then I think that's supposed to be purple on the other side. Unsentenced awaiting trial is the largest category, okay? Probably that offers one of the better potentials for reduction. I will caveat that with probably, again, because you really need to know what the data says at the individual trend level, not just that, ooh, I mean, the quick answer is, oh, all we've got to do is deal with pre-trial, we're done. I would caution against that.
David, is it possible for an inmate to be in more than one category?
Is it? No. No, not on this one? When there are so many categories?
So if you're state responsible sentence, you wouldn't also have a local responsible sentence? You wouldn't get two days on the safe to appear in five years on a malicious move?
The only county is whatever they're serving at that time, it'll be counted in that category.
What if it's sentenced to a concurrent?
I'm not speaking about that, about the only category, but I'm not sure.
It's what their category by the jail is, I'm not sure on that, if the concurrent charges, how the jail has categorized them, but in this one here, it would be, I mean, coming from their reports, I think it's how they think.
Now, and on that, state responsible is probably the most interesting of the categories. Because I believe it's nine days, you have nine days to get a person out of this facility, and then.
They don't get them out though.
No, 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 I mean, that's what the rules suggest you should, and then they become a different category. You know, that's a move, but at that point in time, I believe there may actually be some compensation from the state. And not saying that it's a driver, but there are jurisdictions where that is a revenue source. So while the quick answer would be, wow, I've got 250 people, they're state responsible. I just need to get state come together. There are a lot of jurisdictions that will move not so fast, because it's a revenue source. And again, the hardest thing to remember is the marginal cost of one extra person in the facility. So don't discount a revenue source if that sounds a whole bunch, you know, so.
So based on this, these are actual numbers that you're counting, 200, 100 to 600?
And this is based on the average numbers?
Yeah, this is our one-to-one snapshots from the last five years that I did averages of them.
So in essence, you're saying around 30% of the people could be state?
Out of the total. Or, I mean, they might be parole violators. I mean, what it is, is definitely that top blue line, the unsentenced awaiting trial. I mean, those are, that's.
That last category is hitting around 200. It looks like that would be about, and close to a third of the population could be state responsible.
Nah, probably less, I would say probably more like 15, 20. Because if you added all those up, then that's how much that would be. Because you're waiting for a sentence, that's probably.
David, go to the next slide, you actually start to break that down a little more.
So when it says, on this next slide, awaiting trial with, awaiting felony trial was sentenced. They have been sentenced and are serving something, but are still waiting for a felony trial and different charges?
That's the individuals who had misdemeanor convictions, but they still got in a felony charge for it.
So David, just, I'm not trying to brush.
No, no, it's interesting.
I think the bottom line, and I think Ben would come back to us again, but I think the bottom line that we want, that we were asking for today is, where are we in this process? A, where are we in this process? And B, this is not a question for today, but a question for the next time you come to us. We put $3 million in the budget. How much of that have we spent in terms of jail, that's a thing that?
Right now, this is fiscal year '12. That's the slide, there's probably two, what, about two more.
The last one.
Probably as we go forward, you know, a lot of what we spend is 3 million?
1.2 billion are grants.
Right, and that's passed through. As we, the mental health docket, the crisis assessment, that's the program by which when the police can have mental health come out there, or behavioral health actually come out, alternative sentencing, pre-trial services, home electronic monitoring. If you want to know where the money has been spent, and I think more of a mix, to me, I think the better question is, which of these have not gone to scale, which gives me the greatest promise of where we can go? All right, mental health, I don't think we're ever going to get a whole bunch more out of that. I mean, we'll get more numbers, but, and that'll always be a good thing to have. But as far as, you know, and we've gotten good results from that. But if you're really talking about, are we going to move 200 people with that? That's probably not going to be the place we're going to move 200 people. Probably the places where we're going to have our greatest movement are going to be alternatives, including, right now, I don't like the term, it's what we have right now, which is home electronic monitoring. That's the term we use, but that, that, I don't like it for this reason, it suggests antiquated technology. I mean, we were using that, that suggests what we had 20 years ago, where you had to have a landline, and if you left, you know, your property, the line would ring, some places, somebody would know you left, that's not what we have now. And it's important to note that the technology that exists today and the management practices for what it can be used for, I think are your greatest areas of really dealing with who can be safely kept outside of the secure confines of the jail and yet still protect public safety and the justice system, if done properly.
So according to this chart, is the mis-terminology of home electronic monitoring, is that 150,000? Is that the bottom of that?
No, this one's, which one's?
150,000.
Right, this one's.
600,000.
Yeah, it's electronic monitoring, that's a six. And candidate, that's probably, we've got 40, I mean, that's the least utilized thing that we have.
Which one are you talking about?
The home electronic monitoring portion. I mean, that's where you've got your greatest potential for change, and that's one of the reasons, as I sit here, I'm comfortable that there's work to be done, but this can be done, just because that's been so.
How many do we have now? How many men?
Monitoring.
Uh, we got 15.
We got 15 capability of 100.
15 on capability of 100?
Yeah.
And for the 15, the cost is 600,000?
Well, the staff or electronic monitor, 600,000, yes.
We got 600, can I just clarify on that, we have 600,000 available or 15 people are costing us 600,000?
No.
It's okay, I'm just. Fine. So just, just stop me for just a minute. But I think what.
I didn't hear your answer to your question.
No. What, we have not spent the 600,000?
No, we have not. Part of that 600,000 is the contracts for the electronic monitoring and that's based on the number that you use.
So what am I?
So you're only charged the electronic for the equipment cost when you place somebody on it. And the budget is 600, but part of the staffing is the new equipment.
And I think, David, what would be helpful to us, I've been, I'm just throwing this out, we need to come back in February with where you are in this plan, by that time you should have some data. You should also be able to come back to us with this chart and say, as you just said, electronic monitoring, monitoring is not going to give us any of the people. It's only going to use your talent or not, I don't care what it is, but, and then maybe to give us an idea of where you are in this budget, what you're going to work on, what you have to, but we have plans for all, we don't have plans for all, so we can get a better handle on where we're going down the road.
Are we talking near the end of February? Because speaking of the beginning of February, I don't know how much is going to be done between now and two months.
And the only thing, the only reason I'm bringing that up is because I know some of this money was a grant, but it's budget time.
I'm sure.
And if you have $3.1 million and we've only spent a million of it, do we give you more money for next year? Do we roll this over or do you say, we can't use it?
I'm sure. So we need to know the budgetary implications of.
And justification for it, and where are you in this plan? And I hate to push it, but I think, you know, budget session is all in the wrong. Why don't we aim for the first, would be reading, for the, would be in February or with a backup to the first council, that's it.
So from my understanding, we can utilize today as sort of more of a background.
This was an excellent background, I think, for everybody in terms of.
And let's give the fiscal implications, take the next presentation.
We have to get a handle on that.
That one.
Okay.
Glad to know. Present?
All right. Anyways. And Simon? Cynthia?
Yeah, I'll go.
Okay, all right. Okay, next we have boards and commissions and then we have a closed session.